Good evening. Can everybody hear me all right? Okay, we're not used to the masks and the microphone. So I'd like to call the September 21 meeting to order, and the first order of business is the election of officers. I'll turn the meeting over to Chuck Sheehan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, good evening, members of the commission. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to place a nomination to following officers. Chairman Ben Filbert, Ice Chairman Fred Deekman, Secretary Lynn Prosser, Member of the commission, Member Ryan Deasy. That's the move.
All those in favor? Aye, aye. Opposed? Don't move. And then we're gonna... Thank you. We're gonna switch around the agenda a little bit and do our... I guess we'll do the minutes first, Keith, and then we'll move ahead to administrative.
Sure. Yeah, yeah, the Department of Affordable Housing Plan York South happens.
Right.
If we could just also follow up on that.
And seated tonight by myself, Ben Filbert, Chuck Sheehan, Ryan Deasy, Fred Deekman, and Gary Delkey. Thank you, Gary. UN is not here tonight. So, do we have motion on the minutes?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Yeah, if you could just take a moment to...
That's taken. Yep.
Um, we have looking at six D's, six R's. Six D's, one. We have a building on the... We have a two-month-long policy. Calling permit application to the existing pergola, property located at 25, Roosevelt Avenue. This property located at, um, at least... Assistant map 174 block 15, block 7, block 1, block 5. Um, this is the site of Andy's Pizza, um, corner 27th and 4th. Back in 2019, the Commission approved zoning permit for destruction of a, uh, a pergola, the restaurant. Um, and the application was specifically on 100 pergola, the open slacks, uh, in solid room. Um, we're building solid room, um, that we... Send it those quietly. You can work out without required permits. So the permit now is just to legitimize the roof that's put on there. Um, there's no zoning issues with it. It just had to come back with the permission, which is okay. Mr. Drew, I'm just gonna be... Always here. To answer your questions. Never heard of it. Probably before. I'm sorry, it's not... Never seen, never heard of it. Never been to the property. I'm not sure. Not even... I just heard you talk this. You didn't put it... Yeah, well, it really does. If you had to move the property, just to permit up for a while. Oh, somebody dropped a microphone.
I actually constructed the pergola. And that was in 2000. I can't hear either. That don't feel good.
For those of you that can't see, there's a spider hanging off of the microphone. One second. Well, let him go. He's just walking on the carpet.
Okay, 2019, I came before the Commission and got permitted to put the pergola up, which I did. And, uh, it was an open roof at the time. In 2020, in the fall, they hired a company, New Haven Roof, uh, New Haven Orning Company to put eyes and glass around it, and somehow they ended up putting a roof on it and everything else, which I had no part of. But they... Since then, they've called New Haven Roofing back to represent and get it, build a fence for it, and they refused to even answer calls to them. I tried calling New Haven Orning, and they won't even respond to me. So I'm here to kind of rectify the whole situation now. I mean, it's current, it's done right. That I'll verify, because I did check it out. But it was done by New Haven Orning. You know, it was done in 2000, fall of 2020.
Is the roof, is it there now? Is it... What kind of... Is it seen and that sort of thing? Is there... Is there concern about you having to apply? Have to install?
The... What I had was four-by-fours, four inches part all the way across, which is half a roof, really. But there were holes between it, and they put metal roofing on it. It's very adequate, and I've done the numbers on it. Structurally wise, it's structurally safe. And I've done all that stuff. So it's structurally sound, and they did a good job passing it down. The product they use is in your application form. It was done properly.
Keith, would you know if the building inspector looked at it?
No, I don't think, you know, he looked at it initially, but if the builders put on after the fact, they'd have to apply for a building permit after they get the zoning permit.
And then he will inspect it?
Yeah, yeah. Make sure it's done right.
Okay, so that's... That will happen before approving it?
Well, the building permit has to come first. Um, so that's what they apply for now. Um, you know, if the Commission approves it, they could put on a circulation, just to be clear, that a building permit is, uh, needed.
Or just, if we also ask to just have the building inspector inspect it after the zoning permit, since it's already there? Would they need a separate building permit?
I think you'd have to apply for the permit, you know, officially get permission.
I will apply for it immediately if I have to. I am a licensed contractor.
All set. Is there a motion on this? Uh-huh. I would like to motion to approve the application. There's a situation that the building inspector be satisfied with. Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Don't move. Thank you, please.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Keith, thank you.
Item 62, UN 21, 233, 27 Broadway Ave LLC zoning permit application for change of use from retail to personal services and associated signs, property located at 27 Broadway Ave Mystic. Assistant map 174 block 4, block 2, block 5. That's fine. Uh, this is a simple change of use application for that building next to CDF Mystic. Uh, going from a gift shop to a hair salon. Personal services are allowed by right in the LS5 zone. Um, the signs conform to the zoning regulations and the previous multi-tenant signage program that was applied at the building. Um, some of the signs have been eliminated or reduced to signs.
Is that... Is that...
It doesn't. The plan doesn't change. Is it... Is that... I'm sorry. I'm having a hard time here.
Is the parking is adequate for the use?
It is, yeah.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the application.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Don't move.
On item 63, VON 21, 24 Rock River Associates LLC zoning permit application for change of use from medical to wholesale to the city and associated signs. Property located at 23 Claver Drive, seats 107 to 108, in Mystic. Assistant map 163, block 1, block 19, zone 280. Um, this is for... The, um, what's known as the Mystic Factory Outwork Building 2. Um, this is one that now is all medical offices down Claver Drive. Um, so this is about a 3,300 square foot former autonomous office. Being proposed for use as a wholesale operation for Sift Bakery. Space will be used to fill wholesale and online ordering along with some food preparation, storage, and office space. Um, no in-person sales are proposed there, although that's not prohibited in the zone. Um, wholesale and retail is permitted by right in the 280 zoning district. About five to 10 employees there. Um, with a large, underutilized parking lot. Um, doesn't require any parking for zoning. Signs to replace what's there. And what was approved. They have a multi-tenant signage program also approved. Um, conform to the bulkings requirements of the 280 zone. Um, and applicants are here for that also, if there's any question.
This is on the south porch on the span. Is it near the north side?
Um, yeah, I think that is the north side.
Of course, there's a lot of question there. Oh, yeah. Um, I just have one question. The, um, the application makes mention of a loading zone area on the left end of the building, but the picture didn't show. I was wondering if that... And the drawing shows these, so I was wondering how that was gonna fit into the... The...
Sure. Hi. Good evening. My name is Adamia. I'm owner of Sift Bake Shop in Mystic. Um, so to answer your question, currently in the existing, uh, outlay for the building, there was a loading zone, so there is a paved loading area. However, the garage doors that were previously there have now been walled and clapboarded over. Uh, there are two remaining, um, steel structural doors, solid doors, uh, that are within very close proximity, probably 10 to 15 feet away from my suite on the northwest end. That'll provide loading and unloading for our, uh, shipping and receiving.
You're not doing any extra, uh...
No.
No?
All of our renovations will be internal.
I see now in the pictures.
Sure. Of course. Thank you.
Any other question?
Any idea on like the number of trucks, number of trips you would do on average day?
So, number of trucks. So we're using, uh, small box trucks to, uh, deliver wholesale, and then we have single axle semis that'll be delivering goods there. Um, the larger trucks, on average, three times a week. Um, the smaller vans daily. One, two to three times daily.
Thank you.
Of course.
Okay, Watson?
One full of little box. And then number three, I'm just gonna read from Austin's book.
A second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Don't move. Thank you.
I'm seven K old business. Um, please, you want to be, um, Daniel and Jennifer Wilson? Who's also, uh, who's carrying a different site man in the mask game. But they're still being involved. And we work for the beginning system is no more. They're up there with the removal of the front faces. Probably will be a 24 by Mystic. Assistant map 176 block 3, block 7, zone 280.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Keith Nielsen. I'm with Daco Incorporated. And we prepared the application and the drawings before you tonight. Um, this is a fairly straightforward, um, application. Uh, when the Wilsons undertook some landscaping on their property to remove some invasive species of vegetation along the backside of their seawall, they found a surplus of, of rock fill in the area. And, um, trying to make judicious use of the material for beneficial purpose, they put it onto the seawall and onto the, um, revetment, um, which was in front of the wall. And, um, they changed, um, both the elevation of the lawn behind the wall and the top of the wall. And so it made the difference about 30 inches at maximum, an average of two feet, uh, for most of the length of the wall. And we've got this shown on our, um, on our diagram, our drawing for the property. We've also got a profile down at the bottom, which shows the height of the former wall and the height of the new wall. And you can see that the difference, um, between the two is about six inches, um, at the most. And, um, it's not an appreciable difference. However, this work is in the VE zone, and so it is obligated to go through a coastal site plan review, which is where we are today. Um, not only has the process been reviewed with the zoning enforcement officer and Mr. Brines, we've also, um, had contact with the DEP enforcement officer and rectified all of their concerns, um, at the same time. The lawn has been reestablished behind the wall. Um, everything on the property is stable at this time, and the project has been determined to be consistent with not only FEMA regulations, but also with DEP coastal area management standards. And so we're seeking your approval for this as an after-the-fact, um, situation. And, um, we believe that this represents decent and low-impact development that benefits everybody, maintains the vista, maintains public access. There's no, um, interference with water flow and circulation or any of the water quality issues associated with drainage from this site. So we think we've covered all the bases, and we're seeking your approval.
Thank you. Any question?
Uh, is this a way of access on...
Uh, yes, it's a VE zone.
VE zone.
Yes.
Live off, live off, correct? Put it on its way back to the zone.
Yes.
Uh, is it that's a consideration? Ability analysis of the note of...
Um, well, what I can tell you is that the, the majority of the stone that is on this structure has been there for the last 25 years because I was involved with the original permitting of that stone in 1995. And so it's been through not only, um, mathematical analysis, engineering equations, it's lived through Sandy and Irene, and that's saying something.
That's gotta say something. But you did say there's been a ability analysis.
Yes, there is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, any question?
Thank you. Are you welcome?
Look through, uh, the... The...
All those in favor?
Aye, aye. Prove. I proved.
Thank you.
So back to, uh, we'll be able to carry this here in a public hearing. The remaining phase, the Mission Word Top 24, Planning Plan, and, um, Susan Holland, our Director of Community Development, of, uh, CFP Birds, and the Commission.
Good evening. I'm happy to meet all of you in person. Um, this is the first time I've been before the Planning and Zoning Commission in person here in Stonington since I started with the town last May, since most of our meetings have been virtual. I'm very happy to be here with you tonight. I wanted to come to make sure that I introduce Dr. Donald Poland, um, who has completed the Affordable Housing Plan draft for you to take a look at this evening. He's been working with the Economic Development Commission over the last 18 months, um, since May of 2020. Uh, we had put in actual, uh, a grant application to be able to fund the majority of the lift to be able to do this. And so he's joined our staff and the EDC in putting together this for you this evening. Um, Dr. Donald Poland is an urban geographer and a planner and a community development strategist. He has 25 years of experience. He has a doctorate from the University of College in London, a master of science from Central Connecticut State University, and a bachelor's in psychology and geography from Central Connecticut State University. As you know, the state statute under 8-30J requires each town in Connecticut to establish an affordable housing plan by the spring of 2022. So we are right in line to be able to establish our new affordable housing plan. So Dr. Poland is here this evening to make that presentation to all of you and to answer any questions that you might have. Over the last year, we've held multiple public engagement sessions, um, different open tasks, and asked for a lot of community involvement about the Affordable Housing Plan. And you'll notice, um, from the draft that there are many very interesting action items that might move us forward in terms of, of this initiative. So I will hand it off to Dr. Poland.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the commission. Keith, is there a way I can hook into the, uh, screen? And hopefully you can hear me now. Good evening, Chairman, members of the commission. Thank you for your time this evening. So my name is Don Poland. I'm with the firm of Goman York Property Advisors, and we assisted the community in creating the Affordable Housing Plan. I may be a little repetitive in some of the background on this as we get started, uh, based on the introduction. Uh, but please forgive me. So essentially, the, uh, the aim of tonight is for me to kind of provide a summary of the plan. I believe you've received it in advance and had a chance to look at it. Uh, I will present kind of highlights of the plan. And basically, each of these bullet items, why affordable housing? What does affordable housing mean and so forth? Is a specific section within a plan, within the plan, and I'll basically touch on all of them. The background to this is, uh, there's been a movement within the state at various levels to recognize the need for affordable housing and the challenges of affordable housing. So the legislature in 2017 passed legislation requiring communities to plan for housing. And basically, you have to come up with a plan every five years that addresses how you're gonna, uh, increase or add affordable housing to your community. This isn't necessarily new to planning because Section 8-23 of statutes, which is the plan of conservation development, which I'm sure you guys are for, um, familiar with, already has provisions that say things like, "We must make provisions for a development of housing opportunity, including, uh, opportunities for multifamily dwellings for all residents of the municipality and the planning region, not just the municipality. And also to promote housing choice and economic diversity in housing, including housing for both low and moderate income households." So this idea of affordable housing within our planning processes is not new. Uh, however, the state mandate that we now plan for explicitly is new. So how did we arrive here tonight? Um, basically, uh, as was already stated, the town applied for a competitive grant and was awarded that, provided with funds to complete this plan. That was back in mid 2020. Work on the plan specifically started in September 2020. We did a review of regional and local plans and studies and regulations. We looked at socioeconomic demographics and market segmentation analysis to kind of determine what's going on in the overall market. And we also did a market, housing market study, uh, for the community. In addition, uh, in November and December, three technical memos were issued. The first one was on recommendation, uh, recommended modifications to land use regulations, specifically the zoning regulations. Uh, memo two was a housing needs assessment, and memo three was a look at, uh, housing and affordable housing incentive programs. These really kind of created the bulk of the research and the framework for what would become the plan, uh, in their very detailed documents exploring each of these issues. The Economic Development Commission that led the charge on this hosted a number of public meetings and forums. In October, we did a presentation on understanding affordable housing and the housing needs assessment. In November of 2020, a presentation on land use regulation review, essentially memo number one there. And in December of 2020, a housing, uh, affordable housing incentive programs, the research and findings on those programs. And in January 2021, we hosted a virtual community conversation on, uh, affordable housing and the Affordable Housing Plan. It was a very rough framework or draft of the plan at that time that was presented. Between February and May, we essentially drafted the housing plan. Uh, went through revisions with feedback from the community and from staff. And then in June of, uh, June 17th of 2021, we did a formal presentation of the draft plan to the community. And it is the same plan that's before you tonight. And this presentation is almost the same presentation that I gave on June 17th, uh, to the community as a whole. So understanding and defining affordable housing, this kind of becomes complicated because there's probably 100 different definitions, uh, of affordable housing. But in the context of Connecticut, uh, there is this recognition, both at national level and within the state, that we do have a degree of a affordable housing crisis. Affordable housing is, uh, as defined by HUD, uh, is that housing is deemed unaffordable when a household spends more than 30% of their income on housing. And it's not just the cost of rent or your mortgage. It includes things like taxes, homeowner's insurance, and utilities. State law in the context of land use, 8-30G, defines affordable housing as qualified affordable housing. And that is units that receive government assistance or are deed restricted to be sold or rented at or below prices for which the household pay 30% or less of their income. And 8-30G requires each town to provide 10% of their housing stock as qualified affordable. Stonington's housing stock, uh, is essentially 5.93% or 561 housing units meet the state definition of qualified affordable. I think it's important just to note at this point, this is a narrow definition. For better or worse, whether or not we like it, the state's definition is narrow. There is housing out there in the community that is affordable based on the levels at which it rents at, but because it's not restricted as affordable housing, it's not included in this definition. So qualified households are households with incomes at or below 80% of median household income. And to provide context, we have the Connecticut, New London County, and Stonington median household incomes there. Your median household income is approximately 79,000. And 80% of AMI is a household earning 63,400 per year. At the 80% AMI level, we are not talking about low income. We are actually talking about kind of middle-class incomes. Uh, but as we go lower to 60%, 50%, 30% AMI, uh, we start getting into lower-income households. The definition for sustainability, uh, has always kind of floated around this idea of the Venn diagram, the overlapping social, environmental, and economic, uh, needs that in the center, when they overlap and they are balanced, become sustainable. And the definition is development that meets the needs of the present without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their own needs. The last sentence to me is the most important one that I think we often forget in land use. And that is, "Doing so must integrate and balance economic, environmental, and social goals." For better or worse, I think we have a tendency, uh, not just in Stonington, but in all communities across Connecticut, we have a tendency of privileging the environment over the social and economic. And I just think it's important to recognize that housing falls within the social and economic aspects of sustainability. So why affordable housing? Affordable housing traditionally has been controversial in America, in Connecticut, and in most communities. Uh, we, we have a vision of the past of what was maybe public housing, the failed experiments of public housing in the 1950s and 60s. But today, it's something very different. And so why affordable housing? Quality affordable housing provides social and economic stability for households, families, and communities. Ultimately, it's very hard to kind of get ahead in life if you don't have a stable home. Homes are where jobs go at night. Affordable housing supports the workforce, jobs, and economic... Affordable housing supports the workforce, jobs, and economic development. Quality affordable housing is key to social and economic prosperity. Diversity is the cornerstone to resilience. And resilient communities withstand shock, disturbance, and change. I often use the community of West Hartford, Connecticut as an example here. West Hartford is a wealthy, prosperous, vibrant suburb of Hartford. Definitely has an image of being a very wealthy community. And it is. I don't want to say that it's not. But it's a community with a lot of interesting diversity, especially in housing. It has everything from small 800-square-foot war-era ranches to two families, three families, four families, you know? It then has multifamily rental, multifamily homeownership. It has every kind of style of single-family home you could imagine, all the way up to not just McMansions, but giant 50,000-square-foot mansions up on Mountain Road. And I think its diversity and vibrancy comes from, in part, that diversity in housing. So past generations have benefited from affordable housing and the associated wealth creation with housing. And ultimately, future generations deserve the same opportunities and benefits. And when the market does not meet the basic needs of society, government does have a role to play to assist those in need. The Economic Development Commission and the process of this kind of came up with this framework of Stonington's strengths, aspirations, and values. I'm not going to read these all verbatim. But this idea of Stonington's not only a great place to live, but is a diverse place to live, it's a welcoming community, a community that values social, economic, and environmental diversity. It's a community where residents enjoy a small-town vibe with historic villages, maritime heritage, and so forth. And a community where towns' actions promote and celebrate diversity. They furthered that through this process and in the plan with who we strive to be as the town of Stonington. And anyone living in Stonington should have access to clean, safe, and quality affordable housing. Stonington seeks to provide housing that is affordable such that those who work in Stonington can afford to live in Stonington. And that our village centers should continue to offer inclusive, mixed-income housing close to shops, services, and where public infrastructures exist. Part of this planning process was about figuring out how could affordable housing be accommodated into the community. There are some naturally occurring constraints within Stonington that had to be confronted and recognized. And a big part of that is the limit of public sewer and public water, that you have large, vast areas of the community that don't have those infrastructures and can't necessarily support higher densities of development. And there's typically a, you know, economic efficiencies through density that create a greater opportunity for affordable housing. So as we looked across the community, there were really kind of four areas that lend themselves for this plan and strategy. Exit 90 and Exit 92, these are both primarily commercial areas. In the case of Exit 90, and I say this with all due respect, it's just kind of matter-of-fact. It's an older commercial area that's a little bit tired. It's, you know, its heyday has passed. That's not to insult it, it just is what it is in a market context. It's in need of reinvestment. And there has been some recent investment there that is wonderful and great and benefits the community. The fact is, with the condition of commercial spaces today, especially the collapse of retail and so forth, it's very difficult to redevelop in just a commercial-use fashion. So mixed-use development or even multifamily housing provide an opportunity to create reinvestment in this area. Exit 92 is more of a greenfield commercial area. Did you have a question? Right, so hopefully I'll answer your question. So Exit 92 is a commercial area, more so a commercial area in focus. It's a newer area, it's not as developed. It does have the public infrastructures there to support higher-density development. And kind of in a similar way, where Exit 90, it's really hard to just redevelop it simply as commercial. I would say the same is true with new development at Exit 92, with the changing landscape of retail, with the changing landscape of office space, with a yet-to-be-determined recovery in the hotel and hospitality industries and so forth. Once again, I think there's better opportunities or the addition of housing or a mixed-use development approach in that area creates a greater opportunity for new investment than just simply sticking with commercial only. I think in the overall marketplace, it's unlikely that will result anytime soon. Yes, sir? Yes and no. I mean, one, there is some commercial development out there. It's not totally absent. Number two is it does provide good access to the region with proximity to the highway itself. And a housing doesn't always have to be in a location that's walkable and so forth. So maybe the chicken and egg does come into play. Maybe the addition of housing at that location spurs more development in the infrastructures to support it. Maybe it's part of a mixed-use development that includes the commercial with it. So I guess my general take is, I understand where you're coming from. I see that there may be limits. But if we provide the opportunity, we can probably figure out how to make it work. So I don't think we should shut it down just because maybe everything isn't there yet and figure out how the area ultimately does develop, so. Pocket Tuck and Mystic. Pocket Tuck and Mystic make a lot of sense, you know? They're older, they're denser, they have the public infrastructures and so forth. In the Pocket Tuck context, one is 80% AMI is probably about market rate for Pocket Tuck itself. It's an area that is in need of reinvestment. And housing, whether market rate or affordable, can definitely be a part of that strategy. I think we're a little more reserved in Mystic. We recognize that it has that village's character, it has the density, it has the infrastructure, and so forth. It's probably not as large of a scale, and it's probably more about infill and moderate density and so forth. But targeting these four areas, staying away from kind of the picturesque, non-sewered areas. Yes, sir? It wasn't based on the kind of the municipal jurisdictions. It wasn't part of our study area. And I think that relates to land use and planning legislation and so forth, so. So the impact of multifamily housing on property values. I bring this up, and we address it in the plan in greater detail, because it's a very common theme. It's not just affordable housing, it's also housing in general. It seems in most communities, every time housing is proposed, there's this fear that it's going to degrade existing housing values. And especially when the affordable component is part of that, there's also this fear. I've been tracking this, following this for as long as I can remember now. And we basically have almost 20 years of unbiased academic and industry research that has shown time and time again that affordable housing, housing in multifamily rental housing and affordable housing really have zero to no impact on neighborhoods, proximate properties, and so forth and so on. Just going to summarize a few of these. But MIT Center for Real Estate, this is a very commonly cited study from 2005. "High-density Mixed-Income Rental Development in Single-Family Neighborhoods Does Not Affect the Value of Surrounding Homes, and Fear of Potential Asset Value Loss Among Suburban Homeowners Is Misplaced." A lot of people then say, "Well, that's 2005, that doesn't really matter, we don't care." I'll jump ahead to 2001 and a study that came out of just this year. Multi, I'm sorry, where is it? Up there, another study shows an increase in single-family home values for those located near denser development. And, oh, it's the University of Utah Study Apartments. Have not reduced single-family home values and single-family home values located within a half-mile newly constructed apartment buildings experience higher overall price appreciation than those homes further away. The MIT study looked at, I believe, six communities in the metropolitan Boston region and their experience with the Massachusetts equivalent of our 8-30G affordable housing. The University of Utah study is really interesting because they basically looked, I can't remember, I think it was like a 20-year period. They looked at all multifamily developments across the whole metropolitan region. It was something like 8,000 units of housing containing those developments. And studied each development and radiuses around half-mile, mile, and so forth around the developments for impact. And as the statement there says, found no negative impact and actually found positive impacts. There are studies out there that find net neutral, that nothing negative, nothing positive. There are actually no studies out there that I've been able to find that show a negative impact on value. So I think it's important in the context of easing concerns. For Stonington, I felt something we had to kind of address head-on was the fact that you guys are a coastal community. You do face coastal flooding, sea level change, and all those things. And I know there is this kind of concern over just any development in these coastal areas, let alone housing and even affordable housing. And my assessment in going through all of our research and studies, and ultimately what ends up in the plan, is this idea that too often the environmental goals are pitted against social and economic goals. So this idea, "There's climate change and sea level rise, we can't do any development." But if we go back to the Venn diagram, we've got to figure out a way to balance each of these needs, environmental, social, and economic. When you look at Stonington in the context of its challenges as a coastal community, Stonington has a comprehensive flood hazard and coastal management area provisions in zoning that meet or exceed the state and federal requirements. Stony also has a robust coastal resilience plan that confronts the challenges of climate change and sea level rise. And Stonington has done what is needed and required of a coastal community to evaluate, plan for, regulate, and regulate the conditions associated with sea level rise and coastal flooding. Stony's challenge is to work to find the right balance between economic, environmental, and social needs. Environmental concerns need to be considered but should not be favored over economic and social needs, i.e. affordable housing. And decision-makers must resist temptation of speculative considerations and projections of yet-to-be-realized future conditions that color the merit of applications and reasonableness of regulations. Let me say this a different way. You guys have done a ton on that side. And I'm not saying you forego your environmental regulations or considerations. But essentially, the plan is saying, "We need to work really hard to kind of find a way to strike that balance." And I know it's not easy. I know it's especially not easy when you have 200 people in front of you screaming about the development and so forth. But this portion of the plan is really about grounding and getting you focused back on, okay, we've done a great job on this environmental side. We still need to do more. But now we do also have to address kind of the social and economic aspects of sustainability. The housing market affordability study, we basically approached the community as if we were trying to determine, you know, market for a new development. It was just the chosen approach we took in basically saying, if we wanted to build affordable housing in Stonington, could it be done? What's the demand? And how does that play out overall in the market? The study revealed demand ultimately is greatest for bedroom units serving one- and two-person households. That is, if you look over here from the needs assessment, the one-bedrooms are ultimately, there's more households in the community, one-person households, than there are one-bedrooms and two-bedrooms available. So from a strategy standpoint, moving forward, oh, and then utilizing the HUD fair market rents, it was determined that demand exists for 1,300 units, 611 at 80% AMI, 191 at 50% AMI, and 545 at 30% AMI. Zoning can handle this through changes in the zoning regulations, which we'll talk about. Or the land use system can kind of handle 80% AMI. It can work in the marketplace. The lower AMIs need other interventions. And I'll talk more about those when we get to incentives. But basically, our finding is there is demand in the community for one- and two-bedroom units primarily. Don't confuse demand with financial feasibility. They're two different things. But the fact is, the community could benefit from more multifamily rental that's aimed at one- and two-bedroom units. So in Stonington, this comes from the Regional Planning Agency, Southeast COG. In Stonington, 41% of renters and 29% of owners are cost burden, which means they spend more than 30% of their income on housing. We went through in that memorandum number two, does this detailed assessment of the housing stock and the detailed analysis of housing need? And this is basically a summary of the findings. If we compare total households or total housing to owner-occupied housing, we show a big need at the lower incomes and a big need at the top. When we then do rental housing in the same calculations, we see a large need at the very low end and then up at kind of the moderate to higher income levels. It's kind of unfair because it's total housing being compared to one segment, the owner-occupied and the renter-occupied. And so these people are showing up in this one, and these people are showing up in this one. It's when we get down to the total that then we actually see your existing housing stock is actually kind of serving the middle section of the market, the low-to-middle section of the market, pretty well. The need at the high end is really not a need. It just says you have a lot more income up here than the value of housing. That there's a bunch of people that are spending way lower on housing than they could actually afford to. So that's really not a problem. And it really comes out saying the greatest need is at the lowest income levels. And that's not surprising. I would most likely find that in any community. What is surprising is kind of how this filters out fairly well. When we did other calculations, though, related to those fair market rents and so forth, it started to show more nuances and kind of a larger need. And that's where we honed in on kind of the one-bedroom units and the two-bedroom units. Of greatest interest to you is most likely the regulatory revisions. And I'll talk more about them, I believe, on the next slide. These are the things we looked at and the plan kind of recommends addressing. We also then looked at things like density bonuses, permitting, fees, tax abatements and TIF, and this concept called the Housing Trust Fund. And I'll discuss that more when we get to it. The Housing Trust Fund is probably one of the most interesting things. So at the point in time when we created this, kind of going back to last spring, we honed in on accessory apartments. In the general recommendation, even though they're much more specific in the plan itself, is to remove or reduce the square foot minimums and to provide an affordable, qualified housing provision or option for the accessory apartments. I put in brackets there today, legislation. And the fact is, as you guys are probably already aware, I'm not sure if the community as a whole is. The legislature passed legislation this year that made changes related to land use regulations and things related to housing and affordable housing. One of those changes was actually this kind of state mandate that you have to allow One of those changes was actually this kind of state mandate that you have to allow accessory apartments. In single-family residential zones, I believe, and you can't permit them. There's a caveat where you can vote and opt out. I don't necessarily recommend that. Uh also in that legislation, they uh codified what has been case law for some time. And put a prohibition on square foot minimums. That making statements like a unit can't be less than eight hundred square feet or whatever was no longer legal. Don't take it personally. You know, my job is to review and comment and give recommendations. Uh you guys have a lot of minimum square foot provisions throughout your regulations. Don't feel like I'm picking on you. It's common with many, if not most, communities. But basically, those aren't allowed anymore. So there are recommendations. Throughout most of these sections that say these square foot minimums need to go away. Duplex units, uh I would, the plan recommends. Uh remove the provision that treats them differently than single-family units. Duplexes at the end of the day are single-family units. They're just attached. And I think in recent times, there's been a lot of developments across the state that have kind of shown. Duplex units can actually be done very well and add an interesting mix and diversity to the housing stock. And I would point you to the Perkin Farms development in the uh. The fifty units that are both duplex, and I believe there's some quadplex or townhouse uh in there also. And we're seeing that as a more common development approach. I think also when you look at areas of town like maybe in Mystic and in Pawtucket, where you already have duplex units. Allowing uh more flexibility for the utilization of duplexes for infills also makes sense. Uh multifamily residential, allow multifamily residential and zoning districts served by public sewer and water. At the end of the day, those are the areas best suited from an infrastructure's uh perspective. And from just kind of density context and so forth to uh accommodate. Higher density, whether it's duplex or triplex, or whether it gets into more traditional multifamily. So al- uh allowing uh those uses in places where there is public water and public sewer. Your regulations have a provision on attached housing regulations. Uh I think it's another way of saying multifamily. That's why I put it in brackets. I'd think some basic tweaks that kind of reduce lot sizes and increase uh increase the heights allowed. I know you have to be conscious of people's views and so forth, and you want scale and so forth. But I think a reduction in minimum lot size would open up more areas potentially available for the multifamily. And allowing an increase in the number of stories would allow for that increase in density. Uh that would make such developments a bit more uh economically or financially viable. Minimum residential standards, the these are the floor area minimums. I know the state legislation that passed that gets rid of those and. The building code controls, and I think it's four hundred square feet as the minimum. Uh. Mixed-use developments. You guys have a mixed-use provision already within your regulations. I I would say it's kind of an older provision and it's definitely a constrained provision. It doesn't allow a lot of flexibility. And I think it has some limits on the total number of units that can be considered and so forth. But if you really wanted to embrace mixed-use development, say, up at exit ninety. Uh in so forth, you really need a different type and a more flexible. Mixed-use regulation, and we give specific recommendations within the regs. Parking standards, reducing the minimum parking requirements for multifamily residential units. There's other standards in there like loading dock requirements and so forth that also have to be addressed and reduced. The fact is, we don't require parking the way we previously did as a society across all uses. And for better or worse, people like me as planners or commissions. Uh historically, we have over-required parking. Uh in most cases, not all. But it's the reason why we ultimately now, you know, see complaints about these vast areas of parking that lie vacant. So I think there's an opportunity to reduce your standards. Requirements on parking and lot size and non-conforming lots. We did a little bit of look at the R ten primarily in the Pawtucket area. Uh we do make some basic, you know, recommendations of considering reducing the minimum lot size. But right now, you have some non-conformities. The zone doesn't really match with what's it regulating on the ground. And there probably does need to be some additional study to figure out the best way forward for corrections with it. That's the bulk of the zoning recommendations. Uh I'll come back to that of implementation briefly. Related to zoning, but ultimately in this idea of incentives, you can provide density and density bonuses. Uh through the zoning regulations. One of the recommendations we make is the consideration of creating an affordable housing overlay zone. Uh providing kind of a master plan approach, which you guys are very familiar with, with your neighborhood development district. The other opportunity would be, since I think your neighborhood development district applies to places that have public sewer and so- public water. Is add a provision to the existing neighborhood development district that allows for affordable housing. Uh and a pathway to it. Efficient permitting, this is just something I always do in communities. I don't want you to think that you're not doing efficient permitting. Or that your staff is inefficient. Please don't interpret that. You have great staff. You do have a good permitting process. But I truly believe it's something that we as planners and communities need to continually work at. We can always find ways to improve our permitting processes to ensure that we're encouraging the development that as we want. Consideration of an inclusionary zoning provision. Uh create an inclusionary zoning provision that requires all residential developments of ten units or more. I'll just be clear when I say all, I mean, single-family and multifamily. That if there's ten units or more being uh provided. That you require a minimum of, say, here I use the number ten percent or maybe a maximum of twenty percent of the unit to be qualified affordable. One of the biggest barriers from a regulatory standpoint to affordable housing. Uh in relationship to eight dash thirty G. Has actually been the fact that if a developer comes in under eight dash thirty G. Uh which gives them a vehicle to kind of usurp you guys uh through the zoning process. Is eight dash thirty G requires a minimum of thirty percent uh affordable units. The more affordable units you have as part of a development, the more challenging the financial feasibility and economics of development become. My general feeling is less is more. If we only required ten percent at eighty percent AMI. Then my feeling is that in most communities indefinitely within Stonington. Is that developer, in most developers would be able to incorporate. A modest amount of affordable housing without it undermining the development. As those numbers go up higher, it becomes more and more challenging to pull off. And that's why then affordable housing developments, especially at thirty percent AMI or more. Become very complex with federal and state subsidies and so forth because of the economics. So I just wrote a provision uh that's going to public hearing next week in Tallinn. There actually, it looks like they're gonna set a base, an inclusionary provision with a base of five percent. And then offer uh some incentives for ten percent or more if the developer so chose. Incentives, one side of the incentives would be density bonuses. An additional market rate unit for every additional affordable unit. And other incentives through tax abatements and or housing trust fund, which I'll get to. Uh permitting fee reductions. At the end of the day, fees do add costs. Uh Keith has pushed back on me on this one. I pushed back on him. Yeah, they're not a huge expense, but they do play into the overall cost of the development. Uh I worked on a development out of Connecticut. It was actually in New Rochelle, New York. Large hundred and twenty million dollar development. Seven million dollars of the total development costs were various fees. Permitting fees, user fees and so forth. So. My point being is they can add the cost to the development that ultimately gets capitalized into the sale price or the rental price. So it's something to consider if you really wanna incentivize affordable housing. Property tax abatements uh for affordable housing, they can be structured in many different ways. Uh they've become more and more common on all multifamily developments. I've been involved in non-affordable, just market rate multifamily developments in Weathersfield. And Bloomfield and Manchester. That have included uh tax abatements for market rate. The recognition of there is a fiscal positive from these developments. And communities realize that they may have to participate if they want them. It's also common for affordable housing development. We just assisted the town of West Hartford in them doing their first tax abatement ever. They've never done one for commercial or. Residential, and they did a tax abatement for a multifamily redevelopment of an existing structure. And which was including ten percent affordable housing. And they recognized to get the affordable housing, they had to provide the incentive. So tax abatements are a great approach. Uh tax increment financing and tax increment financing districts. Maybe a viable option to explore uh in the villages. I think it's a really viable option out of the exit ninety. Possibly exit ninety-two, definitely in Pawtucket. I'm not totally sure. Maybe some further study for Mystic. And then the Housing Trust Fund, this is actually, I think this is the best opportunity from an incentive program. Or if you could pair our Housing Trust Fund with other incentives. Basically, there's a piece of legislation, piece of statute that says a community can create. A specialized fund for housing. That maintains its balance budget over budget, that it carries over, where most accounts have to end and so forth. So you can create an ongoing fund. That can receive funds and you can determine how it's gonna receive funds. One, you could just say, per of our town budget, we're gonna put fifty thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars a year into the Housing Trust Fund. You could also say that we're gonna go out and fundraise uh and hold kind of charitable events. To get people in the community to donate to the Housing Trust Fund. Because so long as there is a specific purpose, I mean, municipal corporation can receive. A non-taxable charitable donation. So you could directly charitable fundraise into the Housing Trust Fund. You could also say that you're gonna capture, you know, permitting fees for housing. Uh each year that come in and put them directly into the Housing Trust Fund. And there's probably about twenty other ways you can do it. It's up to you to decide how this thing will get funded, where the funds will come from. As recommended in the plan, we basically say, since the market and zoning can't provide housing. At fifty percent AMI and below, because the economics of it fall apart. That the Housing Trust Fund could be a vehicle of providing financial incentives. For developers who are wanting or willing to do housing that targets those levels. That could be nonprofit developers, CDCs. Could be a nonprofit organization that specializes in social services and housing, could be a for-profit developer. The aim is they have an affordability component and they come to the town. Uh there's a committee that has to be established to oversee the fund, and they go through an application process and request the funding. You get to determine what the criteria are. You get to determine how you want the funds used. It could be for preliminary planning. It could be in the form of uh rent subsidies. It's however you choose to do it. It could even be in the form of low-interest loans that get repaid back into the fund. So there's a ton of flexibility there as to how you structure this. I think if you paired it with, and it's what I just drafted a regulation for in Tallinn. We paired it with the inclusionary zoning. And I told you, we set a minimum of five percent affordable housing for developments of ten units or more. But we said you could do something. You either build the five percent affordable or you pay a fee in lieu of. Also authorized by statute, a fee in lieu of affordable housing into the Housing Trust Fund. And I believe the number they're gonna set is if you don't wanna produce the affordable housing. You can pay a fee of fifty thousand dollars per affordable unit required into the Housing Trust Fund. We then, I believe, uh. Set kind of another threshold and another level for funds. Oh, it was the density bonus. If you provide more than ten percent. Uh you don't necessarily have to provide the units in excess of ten percent. You could buy the density bonus over ten percent. Get the market, additional market rate units at fifty thousand dollars a pop into the Housing Trust Fund. So I think the Housing Trust Fund provides a really powerful mechanism. If you pair it with other aspects of uh the regulatory side. To actually generate direct revenue and have it coming out of the developers who aren't providing affordable housing. Uh to the community into the fund. And then the community can ultimately provide. Uh how they're gonna support or provide affordable housing. There's a section on homelessness. Once again, land use regulations, community development departments, government alone. Uh cannot necessarily, local government alone cannot necessarily address the challenges of uh homelessness. So we kind of set out this framework of these four aspects of working at a regional level. A collaborative level with nonprofit organizations, social service organizations. Uh and youth education and so forth at trying to. On a municipal level, facilitate the process of a comprehensive strategy to address homelessness. So the last thing we do in the plan is put forth a implementation schedule. And I just get to have a little bit of fun with this. Uh as you see, the PCC is here. And I've thrown most of the responsibility at you guys. No. It's actually not that everything's being thrown at you guys. It's just that you guys play a critical role. In so many of these that are regulatory in nature. I also, though, put you guys in kind of the high and medium uh category to get these things done quickly. Don't feel pressured. I was well aware that you would be going out to bid for a comprehensive rewrite of your zoning regulations. Which is the perfect time to create a checklist. And kind of go through these recommendations one by one and figure out. How you can actually implement them as part of that update to the zoning regulations. And if I remember correctly, that is my last slide. Thank you. How would I change the law? To be honest with you, I don't think it's the definition of affordable housing that is the true problem. I truly believe eight dash thirty G's attempts to get affordable housing is failed. It's the thirty percent. Half of which has to be at eighty percent AMI and half of which at sixty percent AMI. It undermines the financial feasibility. It requires a developer when they're gonna take advantage of eight dash thirty G and kind of force it upon you because they get to usurp zoning. It requires them to shoehorn in more units and come up with kind of a development that's often not as sensitive uh to the community. My, same thing as I said in there, kind of less is more. If eight dash thirty G only required, you know, twenty percent or even fifteen percent, the majority of which. At eighty percent AMI and a smaller percentage, maybe just five percent to sixty percent AMI. I think it would actually work very well. Uh and you'd get better developments and we'd get more affordable housing out of it. So I really don't think it's the definition that's the problem. Uh that being said, there is some movement going on in the legislature. I'm not confident it'll get legs and get passed. But there are discussions going on that I'm aware of about figuring out a way to count. At least some, if not all, of that market affordable product that's out there. So that communities that look really bad on paper due to the way the definition is limited. That some of that naturally occurring market product would be counted. I think the accessory apartment legislation is kind of part of that. Uh or a first step into that and that you kind of get. uh or a first step into that and that you kind of get credit on these units if they meet a certain criteria and so forth. So but as you probably know, especially if you're been at this for some time, legislation related to affordable housing at the state legislature is extremely challenging and falls apart pretty quickly with dozens of amendments attached on that become a time burden and so forth. So I'm not holding my breath. Cool. Appreciate that.
I have a question. The recent increase in home prices around here, what does that do to the city?
I mean, at the end of the, to the plan or to affordable housing? So uh I mean, at the end of the day, I think we're in this odd COVID bump in the market that I do think is gonna settle down in time. That being said, I've gotta be honest, I took advantage of it. We did a three-week turnaround on putting a home up for sale that we only owned for three years because we knew we could make a bunch of money. Uh so I'm guilty. Uh that being said, I think it's gonna come fairly quickly. That doesn't mean it's gonna crash. But I think prices are gonna come back into a realistic number. But for the short term, at least on the affordable house, uh on the uh homeownership side, it's elevating the cost of housing, which increases the challenge of affordability. Uh so you know, that is real. That being said, at the end of the day, just when you look at income levels, the greatest need on the affordable housing side falls out on the renter side, not the homeownership side. Uh I think, and I talk about it in the in the plan, and I also talk about it in the Housing Needs Assessment Document. Uh the biggest challenge related to housing overall in the housing market is our changing demographic structure. As you know, back in nineteen sixty, only thirteen percent of households were single person. Today, thirty percent of households are single person. We have a housing market that was kind of built for dual incomes. And now we have a housing market that has a large number of single income households. Uh and I used to have a group of friends that called my married friends. At the time, we all made about sixty thousand a year. Their household income though was a hundred and twenty. Mine was sixty. When we went on vacation together, I realized very quickly I was poor compared to that. Uh and I think that's kind of a challenge is how we work through this changing makeup of our households and providing a housing stock that actually meets today's needs, because most of our housing stock was built for generations past.
Do you think the biggest challenge to get more housing is lack of public stewardship?
Do I think that's a big challenge? Is that what you asked? No, I really don't think it is. Uh one is I think you have areas that can accommodate housing. I think the, you know, exit ninety area, and I'm not just talking about the commercially zoned areas, but you know, the spillover into say the Perkins Farms area, you know, uh provides opportunity. So I think if you broaden your view of kind of those nodes, there's greater opportunities. And also like to say, and I didn't push you guys, or we didn't push you guys, or the plan doesn't push you guys here. But greater density is possible uh without public stewardship. Uh I know you guys care a lot about your picturesque, low-density landscape, so I know where to push and not to push, but I'll be honest. If you turned away from zoning as your density driver and looked to the Public Health Code, I believe, you know, we always worry about the idea, well, you can't do it because you have to do a community septic and, you know, DEP, you know, the regulations go through the roof on community septic. But it's actually interesting. Don't quote me. It's either twelve or sixteen. You can have twelve or sixteen bedrooms. They don't have to be contained in the same unit on a joint septic system and it's not considered a community septic. So that's why I say things like the duplex development as maybe part of a cluster subdivision provide an opportunity to actually realize a little more density uh in an area that doesn't have that public infrastructure. Uh I didn't go that far with you guys because I thought there was ample enough opportunities within those target areas to actually have a meaningful plan moving towards achieving implementation involves.
Imagine Mystic and uh Mystic, most of the land you were talking about is under conservation all around Perkins Farm. There is hardly any land that's left that is not under conservation. Um it's it's all single-family houses. Um so where do we go in Mystic? I I don't see any place that's available.
I think you have to look beyond vacant land. Uh. I I agree with you. There's a lot of conservation stuff. When I first got started looking at the area, I actually had my, one of my designers actually draw up a sketch of an area of kind of some opportunities. And I should have asked Keith before I had him do that, because then I found all the land we were looking at was under conservation. Uh so that never made it into the plan. But you're right, there's a lot of conservation up there, but I think you have to look beyond that. Uh around exit ninety, I really think there are a lot of properties that have passed their prime. You guys have some old motor lodges and so forth. I'm not saying the motor lodge use has to go away. But you know, a redevelopment of a site with a combination of both hotel and some small-scale multifamily residential uh I think could work. There's other combinations that could potentially work. So I think there's opportunities there. You know, I look at the Mystic uh shop site and I love that site. Uh I think it has a ton of potential. Uh that being said, it it's a very tightly configured site with not a lot of space. But I think that's a site, if someone could figure it out how to do it to maintain the required parking that's needed during the peak seasons there to maintain the square footage of commercial, uh I think that would be a great site to have a residential component to it. And in the world of shopping malls today, we're really seeing, as the malls suffer, the mall property owners recognize there's a symbiotic relationship between housing and commercial development. If you can drop three hundred housing units on a mall site in the parking lot, that means you have a captive audience of three hundred households that likely when they go out to dinner, are gonna go to the restaurants at the mall or when they go shopping, they're gonna go there. So I think, I'm not saying like mixed use because we all love the idea of mixed use and urbanism of the past. There really is this symbiotic relationship between residential and commercial development today because we don't have those noxious uses of the past where it can really work and benefit both uses. So I think it's not just looking for vacant land, it's looking for redevelopment opportunities. Yes, ma'am.
In relation to Mr. Sheen's question and changing legislation, um I would like to see um places that have renting of rooms, which I can think of four in downtown Porketuck, that could be added to our affordable housing because I'm sure that the rents are affordable. And I think we'd have to work with our legislators to get that changed. We're not gonna be able to do it as a town, but the legislators will be able to do it. Is that what you kinda meant when you talked about that?
Yeah, my my point was, I do know it started last year. Uh the Connecticut Chapter of the American Planning Association, along with other organizations, started engaging uh members of the legislature in discussion about how we could actually devise a way of capturing some or more of the existing affordable housing out there. One of the categories I know that was put on the table is uh mobile homes, uh trailer parks as something that should be, you know, captured. I believe what we kind of formally call rooming houses uh were in the discussion is something that could be captured. The other stuff, just the, you know, really inexpensive house or the really inexpensive uh rental unit, create challenges in kind of how you identify them, how you monitor their prices and how you capture them. But some of those other uses I think are similar. So I would encourage you, talk to your local legislators about that, because there is a dialogue that started last year in the Planning and Development Committee at the legislature, so.
Uh first of all, I I'm new to this plan. I only cracked it open to that, so forgive me if I missed it, but I haven't seen anything or heard any mention of short-term rentals, which seem to be driving uh prices. And um second, just as a comment, until we figure out where our sewer in Mystic is going, um we don't have any infrastructure for for added density anywhere in town.
So on the second part first, I would just say I think this plan emphasizes the importance of figuring out infrastructure in Mystic. Uh I can't create the sewer plant solution, capacity solutions or whatever. Uh but can say, you know, it needs to be a priority in the community to figure that out. And I'm really not trying to punt on that answer, just kind of being realistic. On the uh short-term rentals, uh we had discussions about them internally with staff. Uh a bit with the Economic Development Commission that oversaw this and it came up at the June uh seventeenth public meeting. They're challenging. I'll I'll agree with you. And seasonal units, wh- whether they're Airbnbs or just the house that's being rented on a weekly basis, seasonal seasonal units uh ultimately, or rental units in that fashion, short-term rentals do constrain the housing market. And that is, they create a form of demand that may not typically be there in most communities. So I'm doing some work in the uh Connecticut River Valley area and I was just looking at data. Old Saybrook, seventeen point five percent of their housing stock is seasonal. That's huge. So when you talk about demand in the overall housing market, you know, there's much more significant demand constraints there because of the seasonal stuff and the short-term fall into that category. That being said, when you think about the role of zoning, and this is where we really struggled with it and I've constantly struggled with it elsewhere, not just here. Uh. There's nothing that we do in zoning that regulates kind of leases. And that's what we're really dealing with. You know, we can't, we don't enact regulations that say, you know, rental properties have to be on a yearly lease or they have to be a ten-year lease if it's commercial or that. That's different. It's regulating the amount, but not the lease conditions. So I I personally uh don't really believe it's the role of zoning to regulate the short-term rentals. I think it oversteps our bounds. Uh that being said, I believe there is a brief sentence or two in the plan that says the short-term, the existence of the short-term rentals uh in seasonal, you know, pressures just kind of elevate the fact that you know, the constraints on your housing market are more significant than inland communities. And if you wanna be serious about affordable housing, then you have to be a bit more serious about affordable housing because you have that larger market constraint that other communities may not, so. Possibly, possibly. Uh. But at the same time, who's to say there's not gonna be short-term rental in Pocketuck either? Uh I don't know. I I I don't have a good answer for you. I just really don't think it's the role of zoning to intervene uh to that degree, so. Yeah, a lot of towns are and I really struggle with what they're doing. I've been following the Martha's Vineyard example. Uh and I really think they're kind of overstepping their bounds and kind of distorting marketplaces. And like I said, I struggle on it. I've wavered back and forth. I've swung in both directions with it as I've followed it over the years since it's become an issue. Uh I just, I I mean, even Barcelona, Spain, they just outlawed them in the central city. Uh. I understand why they outlawed them. I get it. But at the same time, they are a part of that tourism economy. And you know, Barcelona, Spain may have just lost like twenty percent of its accommodations through that outright ban. Ban. What does that do to the pricing of other rentals and so forth? So it just, I truly believe it's more complicated and it's just beyond the realm of zoning, so. My apologies. I know sometimes I disappoint. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
The wording at the bottom of page seventeen about the environment and uh ignoring flood zones or having the environment in flood zones take a at least a a level playing field of affordable housing. Um I have an issue with that. Um our coastal residency plan is becoming dated and a lot of the scenarios are outdated. Um the theme flood maps are based on historical data. They're not a forecast. So I think you should go look at um the NOAA Sea Level Rise Viewer and play around with the mapping on there and see onto different scenarios. Because there's gonna be large portions of the town that are gonna be either underwater or inaccessible um due to sea level rise, assuming, and and they have different scenarios, like, you know, um whether we have extreme carbon uh control or we have virtually nothing. And you know, when you look at where they're proposing here in the in the Mystic area especially, um most of that is gonna be underwater in like twenty eighty. Um so are you gonna build houses? Are you gonna continue to allow housing to be developed in that area when you know it's gonna be flooded?
I just wanna be clear. I empathize with your perspective. I don't think the language said ignore it. Just I do truly feel that planning historically has privileged environment over social and economic. And I'm just trying to, through that language, trying to elevate the recognition that social and economic are as important. That doesn't mean forego your existing regulations on the environment. Just struggle with the balance and I know it's a struggle. It's not easy.
Well, thank you very much for your input and uh we've worked a long time for ready and we look forward to speaking to you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
As far as the uh potential adoption of the plan, state statutes require adopting affordable housing in five years. Statutes don't even get into how you do that. So um so the public here does have to go. So the town can adopt it as part of the POCD process or not. Um which would be your decision to make. Uh Department of Housing represents adopting as part of POCD to make it more of a empty policy, adopting what is not required, so. That's uh this is a matter of debate is uh how do we adopt it and you know, let's figure out. Yeah, that's that is important.